Good morning, everybody, and welcome to City Hall and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, October 23rd, the year is 2001. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Can also be viewed live from home on your cable, Channel 35. Viewed via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bernson, Galanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry Weiss, Perry Reyes, Ridley Thomas Weiss, signed Padilla, 10 members present in the court, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. If I can ask everybody to please rise and if I can ask Mr. Weiss to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
If you please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Han moves, Mr. Garcetti seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Reyes moves and Mr. Ridley Thomas seconds.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, there's an item to continue, item number 38C, one of the closed session items, a request to continue that for one week to October 30th.
Members' request to continue item 38C without objection.
On the regular agenda, items for which public hearings have been held, items 1 through 14, items 1 and 2 have ordinances, do you wish to hold those for 12 members?
Do we expect 12 members today?
Yes, Mr. President.
Well, let's hold the ordinances on the desk.
Okay, that would be items 3 through 14 before the council.
Mr. Weiss calls item 1 special. Madam Clerk, we're holding 3 through 14.
Items, no, items 1 and 2 have orders, items 3 through 14 are before the council.
3 through 14 are now before us, we have a public comment card on item 13, although a public hearing has been held. We do not need to reopen public hearing unless there's a motion from the floor. Actually, we now have 12 members. So let's take the ordinances first, item 1 is called special, item 2, members wishing to speak on item number 2? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 2. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
That ordinance is approved. And now items 3 through 14, 3 through 14.
Number 9 be called special?
Mr. Pacheco calls number 9 special. Any other specials, 3 through 14? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on items 3 through 8 and 10 through 14. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Those items are approved.
Next items, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have not been held, items 15 through 37.
15 through 37, I have cards on item 34, let's call that special. And no public comment cards on the balance of those items, we shall deem public hearing open and closed. Any specials? Specials 15 through 37? Any other specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Those items are approved, forthwith on 15 and 16, please. Next item?
Next items, Mr. President, on the continuation, or excuse me, on the supplemental agenda, item number 39 is an item for which public hearing has been held, there are two reports on the file.
Item 39, public hearing has been held, members wishing to speak, Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, I move the ITGS report on 39 and would call for members to support that on the basis of the discussion that we did have on last week. I wish to say further that we are substantially in design phase which has been completed. There has been a call for further movement in terms of this being done incrementally, members of the council, I wish for you to know that this is yet but another phase in a more substantial way to make sure that the personnel that is to be put in place as well as the range of things that need to be done to make sure that the security in this building is what it ought to be. You've heard from the chief of police, you've heard from the fire chief, you've heard from the general manager of the general services department. It would seem to me that that would clearly substantiate the need for us to move forward in what I would consider to be a prudent manner. This is not the totality of what needs to be done, your concerns about incremental movement is evidenced here by virtue of the fact that this is yet but another phase. Those additional things that many of you think should be done can be done as we move toward expansion. Mr. Reyes makes the compelling point about what we should view this as being. It is not to be interpreted in any way as self-serving, as a matter of fact, what we are trying to do is to protect the interest of the entirety of the city. Mr. Reyes makes the point of this being the heart of the city, but it should be also appreciated if we were to extend that metaphor that the brains of the city in terms of the emergency operations center itself is here and we have to act wisely and strategically to make sure that that critical resource is protected in the time of crisis. And so I take seriously the number of points that have been made by the members of the council. I think movement in this regard, that is to support the information technology and general services committee report, that is the report of the joint committee, would be the way in which we would send a clear message to the citizens of Los Angeles that the civic center is taking the appropriate prudent steps in a responsible and yet incremental way to make sure that the business of security at the same time, the protection of civil rights and civil liberties will be intact. Mr. President, members of the council, I ask for your unanimous vote of this item.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas, and I see members of the central nervous system here at the table to answer some questions. Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. President and colleagues, I do respect all the analogies as to our body being the heart, our body being the brains, but, excuse me, let me rephrase that. This council, this center being the heart, this council, this center being the brains of the body called the city of Los Angeles, I understand all that, I'm not disagreeing with any of that per se. What's really at hand here is what are we going to tell the general public when we run out of money because we didn't make this decision in the context of the other needs that we have regarding public safety? And that is the only question that I think we have not fully discussed, and I do not want to go back to the general public and tell them that because we spent money on integrating our fire and security system here at City Hall and at the civic center, that I don't have money for those canine dogs that we need to deal with bombs, that we don't have money for the hazmat truck that we need to deal with anthrax, that we don't have money for the gas mask and the suits that our police officers and fire department needs to deal with the bioterrorism threat. I do not want to be put in that position. So in budget and finance, Councilmember Garcetti came up with a good compromise, and I'm asking the other side to compromise at this point and to move forward on giving general services the bodies that they need to deal with the fact that we're working very hard, our officers, our security guards, in protecting the civic center, but that we take a moment of pause to look at the physical needs, the equipment needs in the broader context of what the needs are of the city. I just don't want to go back to the residents and say, "I'm sorry, I ran out of money because I was spending it at the civic center." This is not about the debate of the civil rights of the public and us creating this bunker mentality and encampment that we have here in the civic center. That's not what this was about. This simply is a question of we don't have enough money to do everything and it would be inappropriate or not prudent to move forward on one piece of equipment out of context when compared to the needs of the general public. And I just don't want to run out of money and go back to my residents and tell them that I can't afford to protect you, but I do have a great video monitoring system in my parking lot, that's my concern.
Cable, Channel 35, viewed via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Burnson, Galanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry Weiss, Perry Reyes, Ridley Thomas, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, ten members present at the corner, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. If I can ask everybody to please rise and if I can ask Mr. Weiss to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
If you please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Han moves. Mr. Garcetti seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Reyes moves and Mr. Ridley Thomas seconds.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, there's an item to continue, item number 38C, one of the closed session items, a request to continue that for one week to October 30th.
Members' request to continue item 38C, without objection.
On the regular agenda, items for which public hearings have been held, items one through 14, items one and two have ordinances, do you wish to hold those for 12 members?
Do we expect 12 members today?
Yes, Mr. President.
Well, let's hold the ordinances on the desk.
Okay, that would be items three through 14 before the council.
Call number one special in any case, Mr. President.
Mr. Weiss calls item one special. Madam Clerk, we're holding three through 14.
Items, no, items one and two have orders, items three through 14 are before the council.
Three through 14 are now before us. We have a public comment card on item 13, although a public hearing has been held, we do not need to reopen public hearing unless there's a motion from the floor. Actually, we now have 12 members. So, let's take the ordinances first. Item one is called special, item two. Members wishing to speak on item number two? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item two. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That ordinance is approved. And now items three through 14, three through 14.
Number nine, be called special.
Mr. Pacheco calls number nine special. Any other specials, three through 14? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on items three through eight and 10 through 14. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have not been held, items 15 through 37.
15 through 37, I have cards on item 34, let's call that special. And no public comment cards on the balance of those items, we shall deem public hearing open and closed. Any specials? Specials 15 through 37? Any other specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those items are approved. Fourth with on 15 and 16, please. Next item.
Next items, Mr. President, on the continuation, or excuse me, on the supplemental agenda, item number 39 is an item for which public hearing has been held, there are two reports on the file.
Item 39, public hearing has been held, members wishing to speak, Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, I move the ITGS report on 39 and would call for members to support that on the basis of the discussion that we did have on last week. I wish to say further that we are substantially in design phase which has been completed. There has been a call for further movement in terms of this being done incrementally. Members of the council, I wish for you to know that this is yet but another phase in a more substantial way to make sure that the personnel that is to be put in place as well as the range of things that need to be done to make sure that the security in this building is what it ought to be. You've heard from the chief of police, you've heard from the fire chief, you've heard from the general manager of the general services department. It would seem to me that that would clearly substantiate the need for us to move forward in what I would consider to be a prudent manner. This is not the totality of what needs to be done. Your concerns about incremental movement is evidenced here by virtue of the fact that this is yet but another phase. Those additional things that many of you think should be done can be done as we move toward expansion. Mr. Reyes makes the compelling point about what we should view this as being. It is not to be interpreted in any way as self-serving. As a matter of fact, what we are trying to do is to protect the interest of the entirety of the city. Mr. Reyes makes the point of this being the heart of the city, but it should be also appreciated if we were to extend that metaphor, that the brains of the city in terms of the emergency operations center itself is here and we have to act wisely and strategically to make sure that that critical resource is protected in the time of crisis. And so, I take seriously the number of points that have been made by the members of the council. I think movement in this regard, that is to support the information technology and general services committee report, that is, the report of the joint committee, would be the way in which we would send a clear message to the citizens of Los Angeles, that the civic center is taking the appropriate prudent steps in a responsible and yet incremental way to make sure that the business of security at the same time, the protection of civil rights and civil liberties will be intact. Mr. President, members of the council, I ask for your unanimous vote of this item.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas, and I see members of the central nervous system here at the table to answer some questions. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President and colleagues, I do respect all the analogies as to our body being the heart, our body being the brains, but, excuse me, let me rephrase that. This council, this center being the heart, this council, this center being the brains of the body called the city of Los Angeles, I understand all that, I'm not disagreeing with any of that per se. What's really at hand here is, what are we going to tell the general public when we run out of money because we didn't make this decision in the context of the other needs that we have regarding public safety? And that is the only question that I think we have not fully discussed, and I do not want to go back to the general public and tell them that because we spent money on integrating our fire and security system here at City Hall and at the civic center, that I don't have money for those canine dogs that we need to deal with bombs, that we don't have money for the hazmat truck that we need to deal with anthrax, that we don't have money for the gas mask and the suits that our police officers and fire department needs to deal with the bioterrorism threat. I do not want to be put in that position. So, in budget and finance, Councilmember Garcetti came up with a good compromise, and I'm asking the other side to compromise at this point and to move forward on giving general services the bodies that they need to deal with the fact that we're working very hard, our officers, our security guards, in protecting the civic center, but that we take a moment of pause to look at the physical needs, the equipment needs, in the broader context of what the needs are of the city. I just don't want to go back to the residents and say, "I'm sorry, I ran out of money because I was spending it at the civic center." This is not about the debate of the civil rights of the public and us creating this bunker mentality and encampment that we have here in the civic center. That's not what this was about. This simply is a question of, we don't have enough money to do everything and it would be inappropriate or not prudent to move forward on one piece of equipment out of context when compared to the needs of the general public. And I just don't want to run out of money and go back to my residents and tell them that I can't afford to protect you, but I do have a great video monitoring system in my parking lot. That's my concern.
Members of the council, I wasn't here for the apparently lengthy debate on Friday, so I have some questions. As I understood, can someone explain at the table the difference between the two reports? Mr. McCree?
Yes, John McCree, Department General Services. There are two reports, both dealing with security. One is a package that integrates physical resources with technology resources, and the other one takes out the technology and just deals with the physical resources, the number of security officers.
Okay. In the technology piece, in the first report, what is included in the comprehensive package of technology? What are the technology items that are incorporated in that report?
Not to go into exact details, what we need is to make P-190 the command central post for the civic center. What we are doing here is we will put in the fire alarms and the alarming owl alarm and the P-190, what says below City Hall East. We will put in cameras in strategic locations, again, I don't want to go into great detail throughout the civic center or parking, so that we have remote capability. This will actually complement the physical resources and require less physical resources on a day-to-day basis. The first, the second report, just dealing with physical resources, does not help me in the long term.
Okay. The confusion that I've had, as you've explained it, I have no problem with that. I thought that the issue went beyond that, that some of the technology and electronic equipment you were talking about was a whole new layer of security, access, checkpoints, perhaps variations in different styles, who had access, how those security systems are going to be deployed. As far as having an alarm system, electronic bank and technological bank and camera bank in and enhanced P-190, I have no problem with that. It's the next level, which you haven't talked about, which I understand is part of it, that I have some more concerns about because I don't think that has been explained, thought out in a way that sounds rational or sound, or it has a way of being executed in a management effort that would work well in what we have to always remember is a public building, the public's building. So, the electronic surveillance with cameras and equipment is fine, it's what's that next level? How is it connected? Who gets where? How do they get where? How easy can people get there and how easily can it be gotten around? And those are the questions, I don't think, in that third phase of it, in this execution, that I've had a problem with. So, if you can tell me how much of that...
Yes, you're correct. There will be some strategic locations that will have card access. They are not public locations, they are more for internal security of this building, will not hinder public access at all.
Is there a way of separating, in other words, letting you have the approval of the staff, the approval of the equipment center, but further detail, further discussion? Were you planning on bringing that back to the council, having some public discussions to where and how those access points, accessibility would be governed in the city?
I'm going to turn this over to Dwayne, who actually did the report, but I just want to state, one of our problems is the physical resources now have got to go around and check all doors that have a strategic implication but not a public implication. What we will be doing is putting card access readers to allow entrance and also putting some alarms on certain doors that will alarm in the P-190, that'll give us a remote idea that we'd have had some breach instead of continuing cycling people.
Give me an example of what in this building would be a strategic location access as opposed to a public location access? We have stairwells, we have elevators, I take every stairwell in this building.
Councilmember, there are some stairwells to sensitive locations which we feel would require card access through back entrances of City Hall. That being said, I wouldn't want to go into detail in open session, quite frankly.
What about fire safety? If you're going to have some stairwells secured and somebody is in a stairwell trying to escape and get out, and then you've got a door that's locked, they can't get in, how does that work within fire safety?
We're working very closely with the Los Angeles Fire Department. Entrance and egress matters are taken into full consideration. Our consultant has a wealth of experience in this area. There are electronic mitigation efforts that can be taken into account when a fire is activated, fire alarm is activated.
So, we have an outside consultant?
Absolutely, yes.
Who is...
Engineered Automated Systems Incorporated, EASI, they have about 20 years of experience in this field. They've done buildings throughout the state, throughout the country, top drawer company. We have plans in place, but the fire life safety integration is something that's paramount to us as well. And as the Fire Department has said, and Chief Ramondre himself said, security is one thing, but it should not, you know, negate the fire life safety of the building as well. And we are very cognizant of that, Councilmember.
If I may...
Let Mr. McCree answer the last.
I just want to add, we're not just looking at the entrance, we are looking at egress as we secure doors throughout the city for just those reasons that there'll be immediately exit in case of emergency. So, it's just not here, we're looking at all the buildings.
Mr. Holden.
Oh, yeah. You know, some restaurants I go into and they give you a little caution sign, "Don't exit this door, the alarm will go off." It's not City Hall, it's a restaurant. So, I've been thinking about this since the last vote, Mr. Pacheco. And what we have done is had the department in my office to clarify some of the things that they made clear at the council level before. Just, I don't know what you think about sometime, you've got to disseminate all the information to the council members. For an example, Ms. Miskowski talked about a phased operation, phased construction, and that's what you were presenting, but you didn't say it. You're doing what Mr. Pacheco wants and you're doing what Mr. Thomas is presenting before us at different times. And I didn't understand that until the other day. Fact, it matters that the electronics design is complete, is that correct for most part? Yes or no?
For a couple of floors in the building, yes, it is complete, Council.
Well, put the mic on, please. No, it's done. The electronics is done, it's for a certain aspect of the building, yes or no?
The plans have been completed, correct.
The plans are finished, okay? That's phase one, already done and paid for. Mr. Pacheco. So, you will, so what this, what the Thomas motion will do is do what Mr. Pacheco wants done, provide the personnel, number one, is that correct? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. The electronic design, phase one is done, yes or no?
Yes, it is, Councilman.
So, when the phase two, and I'm sure it'll be phase two and three, when that's completed, I'm going to ask Mr. Thomas to suggest to the members of the council that we will not begin to install the cameras and all until we have an idea what the cost is going to be and compare that with our other needs. Okay? Now, you can complete the design, provide the personnel, provide the other devices, the conveyor belts and so on, conveyors, I have no problem with that and neither does he, I don't believe. But then I can support it if you say to me today and commit, Mr. Thomas, that you're not going to install the cameras, even though the design is complete, it should be designed, completed. Because you've been working on this for over a year, yes or no?
Yes, Councilman.
Before September the 11th, yes or no?
Yes, Councilman.
Okay, fine. So, you're not panicked by what happened in New York?
I'm not panicked by what happened in New York.
All right, but still that the need is there. So, Mr. Thomas, you should amend your report to suggest to the council that you're not going to install, even though it's been designed, phase one or two, electronic devices until certain time later on, you get the price and bring it back to the council for consideration. Although we voted today. Do you understand? Yeah? Okay, very good. So, that's, I'll vote for it in those conditions.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. And can you hold my time after I ask this question? I just want to hear in plain, simple English, whichever one of you at the table feels like you can fulfill that role, because sometimes, I got to tell you, as a new council member, I get confused. I think sometimes the reports from our general managers and whoever sometimes is, sometimes just difficult to understand, and I don't know if you're trying to hide things or if you're trying to just make it confusing, but could someone in clear, simple English tell me right now why we need this? Do we need this? Why we need this? And without breaching any kind of security, you know, speak about the threats. Why do we need this? Tell me in clear, simple English, no bureaucratic language allowed. And this is for, this is for everyone listening. This is for the employees that work here, this is people at home watching. Why do you think we need this kind of security system here in the civic center in downtown Los Angeles?
Councilmember Han, irrespective...
Hold my time. What's left of it?
The ITGS personnel report, we feel represents a solid foundation for which the city to build upon as this council continues to address and assess the threats of the 21st century. Irrespective of the terrible tragedies that happened back east, this is a good place to start, period. The three Vs, as we've talked about on a couple of occasions, violence, vagrancy and vandalism are still very real threats to the civic center. The ITGS joint personnel report before you today will assess that and address that threat as well as provide additional security should this council choose to move in that direction.
Okay, I supported this last week. I'm going to support it again today because I agree, and I've actually had people come up and talk to me since my vote, from security guards to average employees who said it will make us feel safe when we work downtown Los Angeles. But I must agree with my colleague, Mr. Pacheco, I don't want to run out of money either. I'm looking at Jack Weiss's editorial piece in the paper, you know, he says that our police officers, fire officers need escape hoods that are $100 apiece, our hazmat officials need those big suits, which are $2,000 apiece. We need more bomb sniffing dogs. We need more increased LAPD, but I don't think that's something that we necessarily can just address with budget increases, that's a whole nother problem. We need better information to our public throughout this city in terms of a disaster and what to do. Explain to me, how do we address these other needs? Are we going to run out of money? Is the rest of the city going to be left unprotected while downtown Los Angeles Civic Center is beginning to have a foundation of security and protection?
John McCree. I'm not sure how to answer that question. We have had various working groups look at terrorist aspects, we've had a working group from the EOB looking at civic center and citywide security. This is just one part of the whole. What the Department of General Services did with the Los Angeles Fire Department and LAPD and other agencies was develop just a plan for these major buildings and the civic center. We looked at the funding sources, we took a lot of it out of salary savings within the department, even though the citywide, plus we looked at savings and other MICLAP projects. So, to answer your question, I don't know how we answer that question of the whole except that to strengthen these working groups that we've requested, and I think Chief Parks at the last meeting also stated that we needed an umbrella organization to look at the whole and not just stovepipe solutions as they come out.
Thank you, and I know it's been said before, but we clearly are the nervous system, many of us more nervous than others, here downtown, we are the heart and soul and brains of the city, and clearly, if anything happened down here, I think anything else we're talking about is not really going to make any difference because if things go down here, the rest of the city is clearly left vulnerable. So, colleagues, I suggest that we support this, I think it's prudent, I think it's important, I think it's something that we will not regret, in fact, I think we would regret it if we did not support this measure today.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Mr. Weiss. Mr. Weiss passes. Mr. Burnson. Mr. Burnson.
Members of the council, this is just the beginning. You worried about cost? You can't worry about cost anymore because this is, we're in a war. And I will tell you that this is not the war that's fought in some foreign country. This is a war that's being fought right here in our cities, in this country, as evidenced by what's going on. And we had better be prepared to do whatever we have to do to make sure that we protect the citizens, much more so than ourselves, because we've been sitting here at sitting desks for years without a metal detector in this council chamber and so forth. But, you have to understand that there are other areas of the city that people are concerned in, and this may be a little tough and it's something you're going to have to grapple with eventually, and that is requiring private property owners to provide security for the major buildings in the city with metal detectors and other things that we're doing here because they are also at risk. And let's face it, if you're a terrorist, and Mark looks like a terrorist, but if you're a terrorist, you're not going to hit the hard targets, you're going to find some easy target, and that's where you're going to make your mark, you know? So, I think that we need to really look at this entire picture. As I said, this is just the beginning, and we're just protecting the immediate area. I think every agency, the federal government is going to be responsible for the federal buildings, the county, for their buildings and so forth. But I'm more concerned basically about some of the private sector areas, shopping centers, Disneyland, things of that nature, which would be natural targets. Now, obviously, we only have control over certain aspects, but I think that we need to look at, we need to look at some kind of a protection plan for people who work throughout the city and what potentially could be attractive targets. And perhaps require that security be financed by the landlords, the owners of the buildings and so forth. So, I think we need to move forward and, you know, in tough times, when you run out of money, you just have to find a way, you decide what's more important, and the things that are more important are the things that you do. And so, we may have to cut out some of the things that we think are so important right now, little things that maybe are not as important as public safety.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson, Mr. Reyes.
You know, councilmembers, just the other day on the news, we learned about two bolster workers that have died because of exposure. We talked about folks who are now trying to retrace their steps on what they did wrong and how could they avoided this? We'd hate to be in that situation. Just right now, I was speaking to Councilmember Perry, sharing with me that there's a back door to the mayor's office. They had a gentleman, an individual walk in that wasn't all there, turns their mind, you know, there was, they had escorted him out. And that's very recent. And we're asking, why isn't it locked? Well, they need a special lock, a special door because of preservation, blah, blah, blah. So, bottom line is, we have to come to grips with the fact that we do need to take care of our employees. I don't want to sound like a broken record, but, you know, we need to secure ourselves. And what's frustrating to me is not hearing the cost issues, you know, but we're trying to figure that out. But in the meantime, we have some very basic things we could be doing that could make a huge difference. And the report is one of those basic things. So, I encourage us to, let's move forward, let's pass this report, and let's understand and just start detailing what we're talking about, let us weigh out as we phase into this, what are the higher priorities, and understand what the cost is. We need to find that out, and we haven't gotten those answers yet. I know you're struggling to get to them, but just let's get to the basics, let's shut down that door, let's make the certain decision makers offices secure as well as for the employees. So, again, let's just move on this. Thank you.
Ms. Galanter.
I think it's important to remember that the civic center is not just the place where we happen to work, but it really is the center of our government and it's the place that people, anybody in the city who has something to say to government should feel safe and comfortable coming. And people are not going to come here, they have many other ways to contact us, and of course, most of them use those other ways. They use email, or they call the officer, they write. But I think it's important that we take the steps necessary so that people, the people of this city, whose city government this is, can feel reasonably assured that they will be protected when they come here on city business. And for that reason, I'm going to support the committee report.
Mr. Zine.
Mr. Ridley Thomas's report, should there be...
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, Councilman Burnson said protect citizens, that's our responsibility, our obligation. When I was at the EOC, I was informed that they wanted to build a new EOC because it doesn't provide the state-of-the-art technology that we need to provide that service for all the departments to respond to, needs the citizenry. That's not a part of this project. A concern that I have is the West Los Angeles City Hall, the San Pedro City Hall, the Van Nu City Hall, this does not address any of those issues, it simply provides the civic center security at a cost of $3.5 million. If we had an unlimited budget and we could make money like the federal government, then it would be a different fact. When they can appropriate $60 billion, we look at $3.5 million. as peanuts in comparison to $60 billion. But the concern I have, as voiced by Councilman Pacheco, the Chair of Budget and Finance, is the dollars to pay for this. I'm not saying we don't need security, because definitely we do. The concern is, are we going to just protect our little area of civic center and not the rest of the city facilities? Is it going to be a $20 million project? Is it going to be a $30 million project? We haven't addressed those issues. And I think for the employees working at West LA City Hall and the Van Nuys City Hall and the other city facilities, we have an obligation to them too, as well as the people here in the civic center. And I don't see this addressing any of those. I know it's a beginning. But what are we going to do about the other people in the city family? What about Janice Hahn's office down in San Pedro, the refurbished city hall down there? What are we going to do for that? And I look at this facility, where $300-plus million was spent, and I see a state-of-the-art fire system. I know it goes off occasionally, and there's a voice that comes on and says it's a false alarm. We've already incorporated the fire system in here. When I look at the whistles and bells versus the overall picture of security for all of the people of the city, from the Valley to San Pedro, from east to west, we're ignoring all that and just saying, we're going to take care of civic center. That's what really troubles me, at a cost of $3.5 million when the Chair of Budget and Finance says, how are we going to pay for it? And I think we have this global picture of Los Angeles to say, how do we take care of it all, and what's the real cost to the taxpayers of the city? Because the folks in the San Fernando Valley, for the most part, don't want to come down here and don't really care about this area. They want to do what they want to do out there, and they want convenience. So if they go to the Van Nuys City Hall, what kind of security do we have there, if any? That's the real picture that I look at. I mean, this report is good to protect this. If this was a small city, and this was the center of it, but this is a huge city with other facilities that may not have any protection at this time. I know I asked General Services to provide some security for our Valley office, which we stay open to 8:00 at night, and they do have a security officer out there now, and I appreciate that. But what about the other parts of it? And is this cost going to be 20 or 30 million dollars that we don't have to pay for? Can you answer that, please?
Councilman, you brought up the point we've been grappling with since we started the SNAP in '97, as the cost versus the convenience versus the appropriate level of security. Again, this is just the start for this building. We started here because that's where the consensus was, we should look, we knew it was a new building. Your points about the external pressure points within the city are very real. We know that. We are working with the Los Angeles Police Department right now, and I don't want to give specific location, on specific areas that have significant vulnerability to the city right now. We are designing new security around them. As far as San Pedro City Hall, we have already incorporated much of the state-of-the-art security down there, and we will continue to look at it. The Van Nuys City Hall project is just starting. We're looking at the new Browdy Building. We're looking at new security out there as well. That'll have to be a separate report as we get in. The West Valley Municipal Center, yes, it's a very vulnerable area. We are aware of the vulnerability. We are somewhat constrained in our planning. I think we need to do what Chief Parks said, have a global view, incorporate the terrorist task force implementation, incorporate exactly what each one of the council members are stating. You know your constituents better than I ever will. You probably will know your areas better than I ever will, and we need that input. So I agree with you. We need to have a comprehensive plan. As far as the cost estimates, 10 million, 20, 30 million, right now, your guess is as good as mine. The only thing I will caution you, it's not just the initial outlay for the technology. There are recurring personnel costs that will follow us forever. And probably, rough rule of thumb, 40 to 50 percent of your costs are going to be recurring costs. I'm talking strictly personnel costs.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As a representative for the district in which City Hall sits, I want to point out that we are in a unique situation here in City Hall, and I understand the need to maintain security in the field offices. But you have to remember, we're next to the federal courthouse. We're next to the IRS. We're next to the seat of county government as well. There are many high-profile and significant representations of our government here within a one-mile radius that is very separate and extremely distinct from a field operation. If something happens in the civic center, it will take down the offices in the field, and people will not be able to do business because they won't have anywhere to go, and our computer systems will not be operable. And these are things that we have to be mindful of. Now, we have a basic plan here in front of us. It's my opinion that the general manager needs to provide us with some quantification as to how much it costs. I don't think it's that difficult to do that. We've got a bare bones plan in front of us. I think we need to move ahead on this. I myself have said for the last three weeks, I've pointed out something which I think is relatively minor and very easy to quantify. And even as recently as yesterday, that issue had not yet been resolved. So I would like to move ahead on this and get some basic information, and then, as a council, we need to make a decision.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, members, I do appreciate the insights that you bring to bear here. Mr. Mockery, it would seem to me that it would be useful at some point to revisit for the benefit of those members who have not familiarized themselves with the SNAP program in its entirety. It is comprehensive. It does look at the entirety of the municipal facilities throughout the city, and those respective components will be revisited pursuant to council adoption of the same. It should be appreciated that that which we are talking about doing in City Hall in terms of the upgrade has already been accomplished in the San Pedro City Hall facility. It is done. And so the concern that that's lagging in some way is incorrect. We piloted this technology there to test its effectiveness, and the same is the case with one of the other municipal facilities in the southern portion of the city. Members of the council, this is prudent. It is necessary. It is what a security system needs to be in a city that considers itself to be as prominent as Los Angeles, a 21st century city, with the kind of state-of-the-art technology that complements the human resources that have to be deployed in order to take care of the business that's so fundamental to safe and sound governance practices. I rise simply to appeal to you to support the ITGS report before you, and then we can move on with the balance of the business at hand, which is, in my view, important as it relates to other things that we know need to be accomplished pursuant to the recommendations that I consider to be complimentary rather than contradictory. Thank you very much.
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, you know, I'm trying to figure out what the big concern is to take a pause and review this in the context of other needs. And I realize that maybe there's an unspoken fear on your part that we're going to run out of money, and we're not going to be able to pay for this. And that's the exact same fear I have with the other items on the table. Because if you didn't have that fear that we weren't going to give you the money, you would be okay with looking at this in the broader context. And it's that same fear that you're not saying out loud that I'm willing to say out loud for the general public. If you're not worried about us running out of money, then you would have no problems taking the personnel, looking at the physical equipment needs in context of the other equipment needs we need in the city of Los Angeles, but you're not saying it out loud. So, you know, I'm trying to figure out what the big deal is for us to look at this in the context, in the broader context of the needs. And I just, that's the only thing I can come up with, is that you're worried we're going to run out of money. And if you're worried we're going to run out of money, I'm worried we're going to run out of money. So, you know, that's, otherwise, this makes no sense. We are willing to meet you halfway and give you people to, you don't have tired people working seven days a week, 12-hour days, but there's this desire to push forward aggressively on this physical equipment. I understand, as Mr. Holden brought up, a very good point, that if the design is already in place, okay, phase one is done. Why don't we hold spending more money on physical needs until we look at these other needs that Mr. Weiss has brought up? What is the problem here, unless you're not saying what I'm fearing, which is that we're going to run out of money? And if you don't have that fear, then you can wait with us to deal with the general public at the same time that we deal with City Hall. So I'm just amazed that we're not being prudent about this, and we're just hastily running into this and not looking at this in balance with the other items. And no one is saying that you may not, I don't confuse this desire to look at this calmly and put everything down on paper, that, don't confuse that as us saying no today. We're not saying no. No one's saying no. All we're asking is, give us a chance to look at this in the broader context, so that we can look and see what makes sense for the whole city, not just civic center, not just City Hall, but the whole city. And unless you're worried we're going to run out of money, I don't think that's an unreasonable request on the part of my colleagues and the Budget and Finance Committee. And at this point, I will move the Budget and Finance Committee for approval.
Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am supportive of the fundamental issues in this report, that's the ITGS report, saying that we need a basic integrated system that we should have had, that will integrate our fire alarm, our security alarms, the need for cameras that should be in certain places, and an execution of a plan. I think that's the fundamental basis of this report, along with the personnel that are necessary. I also think your comment that the more we put that in place now, the more it will decrease extraneeding, more personnel and more cost down the line. There is not a building that has been built in the last 20 years that doesn't have that kind of electronic foundation in the buildings somewhere for security and access. What I am concerned about, though, and I'm going to make an amendment to that report, members of the council, because I don't have a problem with the fundamentals. What I do have a problem with is potentially the execution. And I am concerned that we not turn this into a fortress City Hall, a fortress public building. We must always remember, and I think many of our security personnel would have a bent in that direction, security first. Security's got to be important, but we've also got to remember this is a public building. Public should have ease and freedom and accessibility to come here, not be, as I say, creating a moat around it or a fortress around it so that they wouldn't feel comfortable coming in. So I'm going to make an amendment that before a plan is executed and put in place, in terms of where and how access will be given or not given, and what kind of security cards will be given and not given, that that plan, that is for the implementation, the execution of your proposal, before that is implemented, it come back to committee and council for approval, so that you get the basis of your personnel, you get the basis of your fundamental system in place, you can put the network down in P-190, but the plan has got to come back to council. So is there a second to that motion?
I would second that.
All right. Then I think that the concerns that I have, which is how it will be implemented, how people will still feel free to come into this building, and yet you feel good about the secure places, that I think needs the members of the city council looking at it and having that reaction, as you said, from our public, from our communities. But the electronic brains of the system need to be put in place at one point or another, and we can't really avoid that cost. We shouldn't have avoided it before we came back in in the first place.
Is that a substitute?
No, it's just an amendment to the ITGS report.
Amendment motion. Mr. Holden.
Isn't that the same motion I made before, and you just nodded? Said before you can begin to implement, design, and put the final product in place, that you come back to council?
And that's why I affirmatively nodded.
You're not an echo. You're not an echo. I thought that's what I was saying, but maybe, you know, sometimes.
That's a man's corner.
I don't say it, they don't listen, one of the two. In any case, have you had the occasion to talk to FBI or anybody about what we're doing down in town and what they're doing with this federal building?
Actually, we have a working group that meets once a week and includes all those agencies, and we look at the threat.
The FBI and others are aware of what we're planning around here. Is that, well, that's correct.
In broad terms, yes, but not individually.
And the chances are, we're probably not doing anything equal to the sophistication in terms of security that they have in the federal building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Even in Mr. Thomas's proposal. So even though, and Mr. Thomas proposes water die compared to what they're doing in the federal building, there are some that perhaps want to do less. But for the general public, this is their investment. City Hall is their pride and joy. They spent $300 million of the taxpayers' money renovating this building and making it safe from even earthquakes. So it seemed to me, at least, that we should make it safe from some really bad people out there. I'm going to trust your judgment. Sometimes your judgment don't come through so good. But I'm going to trust it today, at least in any case, and vote for Mr. Thomas's report as amended. But once again, let the council know that the engineering is complete, that part of it, that phase, what's remaining to be done engineering-wise, and two, what's going to cost finally to put in the hardware, the final design, cameras, et cetera. And of course, they'll come back to council anyway. So with that, I think that we're moving in the right direction, and the public would understand that. And let them understand, no matter what the press says, that the council just can protect itself. No, this is the public's investment. And what we're doing is protecting the public investment at City Hall. The question has been asked, what happens if there's an elimination? Who will convene the meeting, and where will they meet? The government must go on, just like the show must go on. Government must go on in America. And no one individual, a group of individuals, of terrorists is going to stop that. And while we vote today, we speak aloud and clear that that's the case. So thank you, Mr. President. I think I've got six seconds over.
That's all right. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, Mr. Holden, I think that's the second time you've spoken during this debate, and I haven't had my first opportunity. I'm just, is there a place I should put my complaint into, or? Okay. I stand corrected. You know, I think...
When you don't get recognized after you push your button, that's when you raise your argument.
Okay. I heard what my colleague, Ms. Misakowski, said, and I share those concerns. And I think that's yet another reason why we shouldn't be approving all of the architecture and the systems today. I mean, it concerns me that we haven't yet thought through the level of details that my colleague, Ms. Misakowski, raises. And given that, I think that's yet another reason why we shouldn't be putting the question of securing City Hall and the civic center first, but we should be considering it in conjunction with all of the other issues that are going to be coming up in the coming weeks and months, and we should be prioritizing them. You know, I understand the arguments that the gentlemen at the table have put forward, and I respect the work that Mr. Ridley Thomas has done. I don't view the position of the Budget and Finance Committee here today as a no vote on your efforts. I mean, I see it more as a denial without prejudice to renew it later, and I think we should renew this discussion later and should have a conversation later. The first thing that we need to do in this city right now, with all due respect to all of you, is not protect City Hall to the level that you propose. There are many other things that ought to receive a higher priority than that. And for that reason, I'd urge my colleagues to vote for the Budget and Finance Report, which gives you, because the Budget and Finance Report comes out of a question at our committee to Mr. De Clu, which is, what is your most immediate need? What are your most immediate concerns? We want to address those, and we want to put sort of the capital end of the equation. We want to defer that till later on, till we have all the requests from all the different departments, and then we can prioritize.
Ms. Galanter.
You know, I think it's important to remember that this is not the first time the issue of safety at City Hall has come up. Most of it came up before you were on the council, before a lot of people here were on the council. In the aftermath, particularly in the aftermath of Oklahoma City, there was... In the aftermath, particularly in the aftermath of Oklahoma City, there was a great deal of concern, not just from council members, but from everybody who works in this place and everybody who comes in and out making deliveries and coming to council meetings and coming into the Building and Safety Department and all the other departments that were in this building at that time. This is not a new issue. We are not starting over again. Just because we have new people on the council and new people on the committees does not mean that we ought to go back to the very beginning and ignore all the work that's been done thus far. How many years ago was Oklahoma City? Six, I think. So for six years now, we've been discussing how to address the problem of being sure that we continue to maintain a government that functions and that is available to people who work here and who live here and who have business to do with the government. And what we learned in the aftermath of Oklahoma City was that we weren't very well prepared. Now, we also spent many years in a City Hall that was completely unsafe. It didn't even have smoke detectors, for crying out loud. And we kept putting that off because we kept saying, well, we have to assess whether we have enough money to make sure that the public is going to be safe from fire if they come into City Hall. We've got to think this over for a while. And then we had a long argument with Mayor Riordan about whether we should refurbish this building or tear it down. And the issue was always, as it always is and always will be, do we have enough money to do the job? There's no question, we don't have enough money to do all of the things that need to be done throughout the city. But if we decide therefore we're not going to move forward on anything while we rehash all the priorities, we're going to have a new council member tomorrow, probably. We're going to have, or however long it takes to certify the election, we're going to have another new council member in a couple of months. Are we going to start all over again then? And this is the problem we have. We have the same thing with, for example, the Loyola Marymount expansion in my district. We went through a long community process and a lot of debate, and at the last minute we're ready to go, and some guy shows up and says the community hasn't been consulted. Well, it turns out he just moved in. So of course he hadn't been consulted, he wasn't there for all those workshops. I think that those of you who are new to this, your energy is important, your enthusiasm and your thoughtful consideration is very important. But you should at least acknowledge that there was a world here before you got here. And this is to stop now, it seems to me, in order to go back again, is not serving the needs of the people. So I would urge that we move forward with the Mr. Ridley Thomas's report. If there are additional things we need to do later on, as I'm sure there will be, or if we need to reassess some pieces of the program later on, because we've run out of money, I'm sure we can do that as well. But please, let's not go back and pretend the world just started today.
Mr. Reyes.
I rise in support of Councilmember Sinema's amendment. I was asking Councilmember Ridley Thomas about the cost issues, and he assures that those costs will be delineated. And again, that's all we need from our professionals. Give us an understanding of what we're talking about so that we could be at least responding to the chairman of Budget and Finance, Councilman Pacheco's concerns. We're kind of like trying to think this out, make a decision, and we're flying without panels here, without any instruments. You've got to give us some guidance in terms of the cost. So I look forward to that amendment and supporting that understanding.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the question, I moved the previous question on the entire matter.
We had only one member remaining to speak, so unless there's an objection, previous question has been called. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a point of clarification, I have accepted the amendment as it comes from Ms. Misakowski and Mr. Holden. The CAO has a technical correction, the president, that should be called to our attention, and we can do that at this point. The matter, I think, can be appropriately disposed of.
Would you like to make that verbally?
He needs amplification, sir.
You're on. Go ahead.
He is not on.
There we go. Okay. Ed Rose with the Office of the City Administrative Officer. The technical change is item three, changing the word appropriate to expend $2,366,447 from the Municipal Improvement Corporation of Los Angeles MICLA bond issues directly to the Department of General Services.
Madam Clerk, we had two motions, including one, well, the custom amending motion made. Which is the first item we're voting on?
Mr. President, Mr. Ridley Thomas accepted the amending motion from councilmembers Misakowski and Holden. So if you wish, councils can vote on the two committee reports. It would be, the Budget and Finance Committee report would be voted on first and as much as it was moved later, and then the ITGS report as amended.
No, I think that's a reverse order.
The amending motion caused it to come forward. First, Mr. President, I would appeal to the--
And it was not a substitute, it was just a motion of the committee report.
It's an amending motion.
I believe the ITGS committee report is before us first.
As amended.
As amended.
By both Holden and Misakowski?
No, that amendment was accepted by the officer. Madam Clerk, please open the roll.
Wait, wait, wait. Clarification. By both Holden and Misakowski was amended? I understand, the clerk.
It was a motion by Ms. Misakowski, seconded by Mr. Holden, and accepted by Mr. Ridley Thomas.
I believe Mr. Holden made an amendment motion when he first spoke. That was accepted by the maker of the motion.
No, the motion that's before us that I've accepted is that which both Mr. Holden and Ms. Misakowski have agreed upon, and that's what's before us.
Right, and he's, I'm trying to clarify just the amendments, because when Mr. Holden made his amending motion and looked over and spoke to the maker of the motion, Mr. Ridley Thomas, the clerk and I understood that to be acquiescence to the amendments made by Mr. Holden because she just reported that.
If you wish, we can seek clarification from--
Yes, I'm just trying to clarify what I'm voting on.
Yeah, Mr. President, if I may, it might be quite dangerous to seek clarification at this point, thus necessitating further security in the building. I wish to simply say that Mr. Holden and Ms. Misakowski have made the point, as I understand it, that the matter before us now, having been designed, needs to come back for further review, and that will come through the committee and ultimately the council before implementation is to take place. I've accepted that as the friendly amendment.
Once again, we have the ITGS committee report as amended by Councilmember Misakowski, seconded by Mr. Holden, and unless Mr. Holden has another amendment out there that he's persistent on, we will proceed with a vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll.
I urge an eye vote.
Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, four noes.
That is approved. Now, is the vote necessary on the Budget and Finance Committee report? Let's receive and file.
Second.
Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Fourth with the mayor, please.
Fourth with on that. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President. Items 38 and 41 are closed session. Items, do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Let's hold those on the desk.
Next item is item number 40 on the supplemental agenda. It's an item for which public hearing has not been held.
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President?
Mr. Weiss.
Mr. President, I did want to move to reconsider item 13 on the advice of the city attorney to reopen public hearing on that.
Item 13, motion to reconsider. Anybody wishing to speak on reconsideration? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item 13 is reconsidered now before us. Mr. Weiss, disposition on the item?
I urge support of the report passed out by our health, but I understand that there is a speaker card in on this matter, and I think it'd be appropriate for us to listen to that and-- Madam City Attorney, is that, that was the advice of your office?
Okay, let's call that special and come back to that. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item number 40 is on the desk before you.
Item number 40. Public hearing has not been held on this item. I do not have requests from members of the public to speak on this. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Members wishing to speak on item number 40? Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, this is history in the making whereby we are going to name the tower. It's a Tom Bradley room, Tom Bradley Tower, City Hall, the 27th floor. This motion was initially introduced by myself and also Mr. Mike Hernandez to honor and always memorialize and keep in memory Mayor Tom Bradley. He was alive at the time. The council by unanimous vote approved that motion. This coming Friday, they will have a ceremony at 9:00 a.m. at the City Hall Towers, which all council members and the mayor, president of the council as well, participating in the ceremony. Mrs. Bradley and members of the family and friends will be here to also participate. Mr. President, members, I can't think of any other single individual who's contributed so much to the development and growth and bringing people together at City Hall and the city of Los Angeles than our former mayor, Tom Bradley. He was raised and educated here in the city of Los Angeles, emanating from Texas. He was a great student and also a great athlete and was educated at UCLA. In 1940, Mayor Bradley joined the Los Angeles Police Department, enrolled to the highest rank, held by an African American, and that of a lieutenant, commanded the Wilshire Division, area in which I live. Established himself so well until the people of the community of the 10th District, after he retired after serving 21 years in the police department, decided they wanted Tom Bradley to be their councilperson. And so in 1963, he was elected. Prior to his election, 1961, 62, there was an individual elected to the Controller's office, Revard, I can't think of his name now, but he left the council district and became the city controller, left it vacant, and the mayor, Yordi at the time, and others, appointed another person to fill the chief council seat. And there was a recall attempt. Would you believe there was enough signatures to recall the appointed councilperson and put Tom Bradley in that seat at that time? But they didn't count those signatures right at City Hall. Of course, the rest is history. He went on to serve as the councilperson for 10 years, and the longest-serving mayor in the city of Los Angeles, 20 years, serving 30 years as an elected official, 52 years serving the city of Los Angeles as a police officer, and also as an elected official council and the mayor. So, Mr. President, members, when people visit City Hall in years to come, they'll always know and be reminded that Tom Bradley was here and he served and served as well, as it should be. So it's indeed my pleasure to offer the motion to name and commemorate the City Hall Towers and honoring our former mayor, beloved Tom Bradley. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Holden, you reminded me of a story that I shared on Friday, Latino Heritage Month, where my grandfather, when I was a little kid, was watching, I was watching television, and Tom Bradley comes on and he says, oh, I know him. And I was too small to know who Tom Bradley was at the time, and I said, oh, grandpa, why do you know him? My grandpa, who had never finished junior high school, was an immigrant from Mexico, ran into some trouble, used to run with Bugsy Siegel and Mickey Cohen and those guys. He said, I know that guy because he arrested me. So I strongly support, I'm glad to see the generations have improved a little bit, but I strongly support your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That item is approved unanimously. Next item, please.
Item number one called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Item number one called special.
By Councilmember Weiss.
Mr. Weiss, item number one.
Colleagues, I rise because at Budget and Finance Committee on this matter, there was a difference of opinion between the CAO and the CLA as to how we would handle the approximately $4 million cost of this business tax reform proposal. The CAO proposed that we freeze $4 million in the Business Tax Reform Fund in order to cover the expected cost of this reform. And the CLA proposed, for valid reasons as well, that we not just, not only freeze the money, but that we actually dock that account. And at committee, the committee decided to go with the CLA recommendation, even though the CAO recommendation had been on the table before. We have the two representatives from the two agencies here, and could they just inform us briefly of the pros and cons as to whether it should be frozen or docked so we could make that determination today?
You want to-- We recommended that the possible loss from this business tax change not be taken from the Tax Reform Fund at this time, but that money in the Tax Reform Fund be frozen. The difference would allow the Business Tax Committee to look at the matter over the next several months. We need to move forward on the original proposal, the ordinance now because of deadlines. We need to make a decision on funding when we see what's available in the Tax Reform Fund. It could be more or less than budgeted. We invited the business community to participate with us in tax reform and to make recommendations to the mayor and council on how tax reform monies would be spent. By taking this action now, we're closing a door to this committee. We're telling them that the mayor and council will make this decision right now without their input. It would be more inclusive to continue the process on funding it, find out how much money's really available, and make a decision when we have more information on just what is there and what the long-term policies of the mayor and council and the input of the Tax Reform Committee are.
We're not asking that we, well, we are asking that we defer it, and that period would be until the beginning of next calendar year. So we think we could, it's more than prudent to delay a final decision on this action until January or February of next year, and we ask that you support our recommendation.
Sharon So, CLA's office. We see the Tax Reform Fund as something that was created during the budget to pay for tax reform issues. We think that it is appropriate, since this is a tax reform measure, to take funds from that fund to pay for this. I also draw attention to the CAO report, which indicates basically that we are deferring the decision until best way to deal with the potential revenue shortfall. So that seems to leave the door open on how to fund this, that it may or may not come from tax reform fund monies. If the council decides that if there are other tax reform issues that need to be implemented, the council and mayor can take action to appropriate more monies to that tax reform fund. At this time, we would recommend that that $4 million in tax reform, second-year business tax exemption be taken from this fund.
Mr. Weiss.
Mr. President, I appreciate that presentation by both agencies, and I think they both have very, very good points to make, and I in particular want to tell the CLA's office that I do understand and fully appreciate why they've made their recommendation in the way they have. I would nonetheless move here to substitute for our consideration the CAO's recommendation rather than the CLA's recommendation. The CLA recommendation was approved at Budget and Finance, but upon further reflection, I would move that we substitute the CAO's recommendation that we freeze the matter and defer consideration until a later time. The mayor and I put this forward, forward this-- The mayor and I put this forward, this tax reform proposal, because we really want to do what we can to encourage and foster small business growth. The second-year tax moratorium that is embodied in this measure is arguably even more targeted than the first-year tax moratorium presently that's under present law, because it really will reach those businesses that are starting to gain a foothold and starting to take root in our community. I urge and I vote on the measure, and I would move to substitute the CAO recommendation for the CLA recommendation.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you for the presentations. As Chair of Economic Development Employment Committee, my staff and I have been looking very closely at the recent impact of the post-September 11 events, and I think right now it would be the wrong signal to send to delay on this. I would like to support the CLA's recommendation as a member of Budget and Finance. I'm sure we'll be hearing from the Chair of Budget and Finance too, but in my capacity as Chair of Economic Development Employment, I think right now is a critical time for those businesses which we are depending on for some of the worker displacement and the growth businesses to have that very strong message and that relief sent now and not to delay on that. While I appreciate the fiscal situation that we're in right now, I think this also does affect our fiscal situation long-term, and the shorter-term answer right now is to do it immediately to make sure that some of those borderline businesses right now, which are being hit, have whatever help that they can. I know that the Chamber supports this, the CCA, and a number of other business groups, and so I would urge that my colleagues support the CLA recommendation. Thank you.
Ms. Galanter. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I understand this, this proposal will cause a $4 million shortfall, which will come out of the General Fund initially, but is expected to be reimbursed through the Business Tax Trust Fund, tax, what's it called?
Business Tax Reform Fund.
Right. And right now, how much is in that trust fund?
The fund was originally budgeted for $15 million. It came from business tax amnesty monies that have not yet come in, so really, there isn't any money there.
No money in there right now.
Not until business tax amnesty is done.
But we're expecting it to...
Conceivably, it should have $15 million. There has already been $9 million in tax reform initiatives that have already been adopted, leaving $6 million left.
Okay. You know, I agree with my council colleague, Eric Garcetti. I think this is the right time to do this. I've been hearing from businesses, small businesses, women-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses, who are, who would like to have startup businesses here, and I think this is the right time to do this. We've been talking about this, the mayor's been talking about this, it's something many of us campaigned on, was really truly making the city more business-friendly, and I think it's the right thing to do now. I don't think we ought to wait until January to do this. We got to send a signal now that we want businesses here, we want startup businesses here, and we're going to do whatever we can to give them some tax relief. I'm supportive of this. I think that money will come into the trust funds and the amnesty program. I don't think we're going to have a problem there, and I think it would be a mistake at this point to delay it. So I'm going to vote for the CLA's.
Clarification is needed. We are absolutely, I think both of us, are supporting going forward with the ordinance now, that is, without question. What's being proposed now by the CLA is to take all the money coming in to the Tax Reform line item budget, to take $4 million of that and to send it to the General Fund. We're suggesting that money stays in that, in that account to be used for tax reform at this point in time. And in fact, if it's needed in the future because of some revenue shortfalls, that we address it when we have a clearer picture on our revenue in our budget. The ordinance must go through right now, is an excellent ordinance, to support small businesses and to encourage them to come back to the city. That is, there's absolute support there. But if what we do with the money come in through tax reform, we're saying, honor our commitment to the Tax Reform Group or B-Tax, Business Tax Reform Advisory Committee, honor the commitment, use that money for tax reform. Don't take it to address a revenue shortfall as a consequence of this tax reform effort. That's the two differences right there.
Mr. Deen.
So we ask to support our recommendation.
Needless to say...
I thought you were saying, let's wait till January before we have a better...
I'm saying wait for January with respect to moving the $4 million into the General Fund out of the tax reform account.
The difference is between the CAO report and the CLA report is how to fund it. We're saying that there was a tax reform fund that was created specifically for tax reform initiatives. That's where it should be funded. What Mr. Fugioca is saying is let's defer the decision until January and we wait and see where our revenues are. Well, I can tell you right now that our revenues probably aren't going to be where they're supposed to be. I think we're looking at some pretty serious...
It should come out of this fund as well. That's the purpose of that fund, and that's what we should use it for.
Mr. Deen.
Mr. President, members of the council, one is that we're not in any fashion backing off our commitment with the tax reform. This is in fact tax reform. We are suggesting that you go ahead with the ordinance today that's before you. The budget and the revenues, as everybody knows, is in a slide. And what the issue is between the CAO and the CLA's office on this is where the money's coming from. We have $6 million in for tax reform. This is in fact tax reform. It should come out of that $6 million. Any further tax reform above and beyond should be on an equal footing with everything else that we're going to be facing over the next several months with a budget that is in dire straits revenue-wise. And the, you're just postponing what you're, a critical decision you're going to have to make as we go on, as the revenues, and I think Mr. Fugioca will agree with this, the revenues are going south on us. And we should not, we're not, this isn't about commitment, we didn't make a $10 million commitment.
Ms. Kowski.
I think the CLA has got the right idea on this one. Members of the council, we just had a debate before about what and where we might have the needed money, the necessary money, to do all of the emergency preparedness things that we want to do, and why we should defer spending some now because we didn't have those priorities. We know we're going to have priorities in those areas. This is a good reform proposal. It's a reform proposal that can be funded from the reform fund itself that was put forward to help reform these, to help create business tax reform. That's where this money should come from. That fund should not be inviolate right now. No fund should be inviolate right now, but as we are moving forward with this project, this ordinance to grant this relief, it should be funded by the fund that was created to help create programs like this. I think the CLA has the right idea. Members of the council, we are going to see, I think, in the very near future, a lot of funds that are going to have to be swept because things that we wanted to do, we're not going to be able to do, and other priorities are going to have come up. This is one that's directly related. It's a fund that was created to pay for reform. This is a reform that can be paid for, should be paid for, out of that fund, and I think it makes eminent sense to move in that direction. So I recommend we support the Budget and Finance Committee as it originally came forward.
Mr. President, colleagues, it's very simple. It appears that there's some double dipping that wants to happen. And what we're looking at here is $4 million. $4 million is what it's going to cost us to implement this program, and we hope to make it neutral because we're going to get $4 million through the amnesty program. So this money should go and be pulled into the General Fund to cover that. I don't want this to be a situation where we implement the program and then we spend the $4 million again by giving more or doing more services. This is exactly what was contemplated in terms of our costs, and that's why we've set aside the money. So I'm going to move the CAO report so that we can, CLA report, so that we can take care of that, and the Budget and Finance Committee report as a whole.
Mr. Reyes.
I've heard enough, thanks.
Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, which motion is now before us?
Mr. Weiss's motion to amend the committee report to include the CAO recommendation.
Should we seek some clarification here? Mr. Pacheco.
I'm ready to vote now.
Okay.
Nothing personal, Jack.
Please open the roll on Mr. Weiss's motion. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Six ayes, six noes.
Item does not pass. The next motion before us?
The Budget and Finance Committee report as is, and that was moved by Mr. Pacheco.
Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number nine called special by Councilmember Pacheco.
Mr. Pacheco.
Boy, I'm earning my money today, huh? Colleagues, Mr. President, this is a motion that addresses a need that we all have in our families, and we're all going to personally have some sooner than later, but this is about the fact that we are all getting older and living longer, and it's not harsh to say we're getting older, some of us are actually getting wiser. So as we go through this natural process of aging, one of the things that we have found out is that the city of Los Angeles is behind in having multipurpose centers for our seniors who are just as active as any other individuals, so I would ask your support for the Arts, Health, and Humanities Report to move forward, the placement and looking at the feasibility of placing a bond before the voters so that we can fund the renovation, addition, construction of senior multipurpose centers throughout the city of Los Angeles, specifically to make their quality of life fruitful one and a better one. So I would ask your support of the motion before you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, before we open the roll, Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, the work of the Arts, Humanity Committee builds on the Pacheco Wax motion, which was generic in and of itself, moving this issue forward in a way that I think all members would be supportive of in light of the population that we are seeking to enhance by way of their quality of life. Let me simply suggest to you that according to the Department of Aging, what we have here in Los Angeles is the fastest-growing senior population in the nation, and second only to that of New York. And what I wish to say in addition to that, beyond New York, our senior population is the most diverse known to humankind. This effort to study with some detail the issuance of a bond that would take care of these senior centers, which we all know are in desperate need of improvement, rehabilitation, and new construction as deemed appropriate. And so I simply want to lend my voice to this happening and happening with all deliberate speed because of the urgency of the growing nature of this population and our need to service it more effectively than we have in the past. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. One of the issues that I see as we embark on this, down this road, is that we are focused on the facilities itself, but let's try to suggest as this project evolves, as these programs evolve, that we also make room for those professionals who have a place at these centers, where they can actually go to people's homes. We have many seniors who are stuck at home, many of them who don't have the kinds of resources or family support that they need. So let's focus not only on how that program will look physically, but also look at components that help us promote the kinds of services where we have site visits, we have home health care, and it's a combined effort, not just focus on the plant itself. Thank you.
Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 called special, and as much as there are cards from the public on the item.
Item 13 is before us again, has been reconsidered. Council calls for Mr. Ron Weiner. Mr. Weiner here.
I'm also identifying Council President Leo Terrell speaking on Mr. Weiner's behalf, and my comments will be very brief. I sent letters to members of the council and to the city attorney's office asking you please to reconsider voting on this issue. I believe the bidding process has been compromised as far as the procedures set forth in awarding this particular contract. I'm asking this council to please refer this back to the Arts, Health, and Humanities Committee for purposes of allowing me to demonstrate the factual evidence that would support that the bidding process was compromised. And that's all I'm asking for, because there was no public hearing prior to this matter being referred to the council for consent approval. So in essence, that's what I'm asking this body to do, to refer it back. I thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public comment period on this item. Members wishing to speak? Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask a representative of Recreation and Parks to come to the table and address those concerns. A city attorney from the city attorney's office?
Mark Brown from the city attorney. In committee, there was a public hearing. I was present at the public hearing. The speaker and the speaker's client were not present at the public hearing, so I think that distinction should be made, but a public hearing was held in committee on this matter.
The representatives from the department have any comments on the bidding process?
John Dugan for the Department of Recreation and Parks. This matter was heard first by the Board of Recreation and Park Commissioners following our normal process of having a five-member panel conduct a review of the bids that were submitted. The Board of Commissioners did hear from both of the proposers in this instance, and the board voted to recommend, other than the respondent, Mr. Weiner, they recommended the other proposer at that time, and your committee heard our presentation and the basis upon which the board acted to recommend the other proposer.
Unless my colleagues have any questions for the gentleman at the table, I would recommend to, oh, and I was going to recommend approval of the Arts, Health, and Humanities Committee report, but I defer to the council member from the 6th District.
Well, since I've been out of town for a couple of days, can I suggest that we just hold it over for a week and let me get up to speed on this? Is there a problem with that?
No problem with that.
Okay, let's do that. Let's just continue it for...
Motion to continue. Mr. Holden.
Mr. Terrell, may I, I'd like to ask him a question. On my time. Do you think that we violated any rules, regulations, or in spirit and intent of the law as we move through this process? Yes or no?
Yes.
In what way?
The way, very simply, the winning bidder failed to submit the required documents in the appropriate time period. In fact, for example, the living...
All right, enough. Was that the case, yes or no, as the city attorney or whoever can answer that?
I can answer that. The compliance documents did not come in at the time of the bid, but they, that was...
Did not come in at the time of the bid? All right, fine. Was that a requirement? Was that a requirement, yes or no?
It was waived by the Commissioners and...
Well, then that's something waving. So you're waving us right into a lawsuit. The fact of the matter is that during this week, Ms. Galanter, I was going to say Galanter, during the week that you're going to continue this, I would hope that you would ascertain or gather some of the information of why there's a protest at this point. And if there's legal grounds for lawsuits, I'd like to know when you bring it back next time, and if there is, then we need to, you know, start all over again maybe, I don't know. But you're going to sit there and tell me that they didn't submit all the... all the information in a timely fashion? I got a problem with that. And that's a matter of record. It's on television, it's on tape, it's all over. And it's something that can be held against us, for sure. You do understand that.
Something the Commission received legal advice on?
I understand. Well, I'm not going to be asking anybody to sue us. And so I'm going to make sure that we cross all the Ts and dot all the Os so it won't happen if it does, that they won't win. So we have to do everything right up front. Thank you, Mr. Terrell. You're not going to run against me again?
Mr. Pacheco.
If this technical deficiency of having a-- the compliance documents not in place, the board waived that requirement at the time that the board made that decision, were they legally advised about the implications of that decision? And what was that advice in terms of the legalities of doing such a waiver?
They were-- The charter allows for a waiver of informalities in bids or proposals. And the Commission was fully advised as to what matters might constitute an informality. And in this case, all of the matters that were waived were informalities that could be waived by the Commission.
Okay. And so what's not to be-- a freshman about it, but what's the problem? What are we doing then? Are we asking for continuance so that we can get more legal advice? Are we asking for continuance so we can-- I just want to know what we're doing. That's just--
All right. I think that's a question for me. No, I just want to ask for the continuance. The reason I did is that there seemed-- An issue has been raised. I've been out of town, as you perhaps know. And having just arrived back last night, I'd like to have a few days just to review the situation. And that's the purpose of the request for continuance, rather than taking up all of the time of all of the councilmembers here.
I understand. Thank you, madam-- Madam-- Madam Galanter. Ms. Galanter, thank you for that clarification. Then I will support the continuance on that basis.
Ms. Galanter, did you wish to speak again? Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, we do have a request to continue the item for one week. Without objection, we shall continue until October 30th. Next item, please.
Item number thirty-four calls special inasmuch as there are cards from the public.
Item thirty-four now before us. Members, council calls forward Mr. Jim McQuiston.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. I rise to give my support to this motion. I want to say that there is a ramification of this motion that has come up. One of the people that live in our district has told me about another problem with this same kind of liability. The city is using lots of volunteers in the organization. And the state evidently is furnishing vehicles for those volunteers, supposedly to do their business. But the city is concerned about the liability of the volunteers driving those vehicles, so they've prohibited them from doing it. And so Meals on Wheels and a few of those other programs where they could have used those vehicles, they can't use them. And people are waiting in their houses for attention from the city. So it's a little bit more than what we started with originally. And I really am concerned about it. I think from a legal standpoint, of course, if I was representing the city, I'd say, well, we don't want to get involved in that at all. We want to be able to sue them if something happens. So I think really the city attorney should come up with what it really wants to defend. And then we can all take a look at it and see if we can live with that. Because if we start out just throwing in suggestions, we're going to really have a morass here. It's a very, very difficult question. And if we want to use volunteers in the city, we really have to indemnify them. And it's a little bigger problem than maybe it started out with. But we certainly want to get this straightened out because we don't want any more Silver Lakes in our area.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public comment period for this item. Members wishing to speak? Mr. Garcetti.
President. And thank you, Mr. McQuiston. I was actually at the outset going to ask Mr. Nelson maybe to step forward and if he can save the balance of my time and describe just the initiative that you've started with the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment to look at the issue of indemnification.
Yes, Councilman. In response to your motion, we've already put together a working group that includes not only, as you had recommended, the city attorney's office, the mayor's volunteer corps, but also I'm including the city's risk managers. I've spoken to, and they know that they'll be a very integral part of this. So we've got our first meeting scheduled for the 30th.
Thank you. And Mr. Nelson's available if anybody else wants to ask any other questions. Colleagues, I began to speak about this mistakenly on Friday when it was introduced. Just to do a quick description, I hope we have many more Silver Lakes in Los Angeles, but not Gateway to Silver Lakes, which was a project initiated by those same heroes that we have in each one of our districts, those activists who come and want to clean up a neighborhood, add murals to a place that gets tagged a lot, something that will bring up the neighborhoods of our city. And we often give a lot of rhetoric to the fact that we can't do these things alone, that we need the involvement and the participation and cooperation of citizens in order for us to solve the problems of the city. So I've introduced this motion with a second from Councilwoman Hahn, who chairs the Neighborhood and Education Committee, to make sure that we really look at this issue. This came up before neighborhood councils, but in some ways is the cornerstone of neighborhood councils. What happened in Silver Lake was there was a beautification project going on that all the rules for the permitting had been followed. And essentially, there was a wrongful death suit. And the sewer issued or named the city and these volunteers, as well as people who had funded the volunteer project, like the Silver Lake Chamber of Commerce. This basically bankrupted the chamber. Not only did that person sue, the city countercomplained against these activists as a matter of course. We've discussed this with City Attorney Rocky Delgado. Excuse me. And I know that he is concerned about this. And certainly, as part of his neighborhood prosecutor's plan, I think is going to be looking at issues of indemnification. But this really puts together, I think, a group that will yield the policy that we all need. I understand all of our hesitations with liability. But if we are sending the message to neighborhood activists, don't get involved because your organization may go bankrupt or you personally will be held liable, that is the wrong message at this time to be sending to neighborhood activists everywhere. And this begins to add that level of protection from the city, saying, thank you for your activism. Thank you for being involved. We want more of that, and we want to be your partner, not a crosscomplainer against you in court. So I urge your support. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to congratulate and thank my colleague, Mr. Garcetti, for introducing this motion. Because what he says is exactly right. And while we are now about to embark on, in my opinion, one of the most revolutionary things in the city in terms of neighborhood councils, we're basically encouraging people all over the city to volunteer their time, to get involved in everything from land use issues to beautification issues to longer library hour issues, to whatever it is that they think will improve their neighborhood-- their neighborhood. You know, I need to take a water break.
Water, please. Water break for Ms. Hahn. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Okay. Thank you. But I think one of the issues that has been coming up time after time again is, are these volunteers going to be held liable? We live in a very litigious society. People always want to sue. And we've got to make sure that as we're really asking people to begin volunteering their time in an unprecedented way, in my opinion, we've got to make sure that we've got some solution, some policy in place where these neighborhood councils and neighborhood groups will not be held liable. So I really thank Mr. Garcetti for introducing this, and I really support this process. We need to make this happen soon. As you know, there are two neighborhood councils that should be certified by December. So really, I'm interested in having this policy be in place as soon as possible.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, anything that we can do to encourage the fullness of participation on behalf of neighborhoods throughout the city, I believe we should do. If it requires indemnification, then so be it. It is my own view pursuant to conversations this past weekend when we held one of the regional meetings for the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. They've had one in San Pedro. The other one, Mr. Nelson, was held in-- We've had two so far, right?
San Fernando Valley.
San Fernando Valley. Third in South Los Angeles. People are quickly coming to know that the business of organizing neighborhood councils is significant. It takes a lot of time, a lot of energy, and a lot of commitment. Any impediments, any discouraging features that can be eliminated, I think we should do so. Otherwise, I believe the task will become too burdensome, too arduous, too intimidating. And our whole reason for trying to inspire more civic engagement to expand participatory democracy will be effectively defeated. The new general manager has already begun to make it a more friendly process by cutting down rather significantly the application itself. And I think the more we do to make it more possible, a more friendly set of circumstances with which the constituents will then have to contend. And trying to put these together, the better we will ultimately be. And the neighborhood councils stand a good chance of flourishing. I rise simply to support the motion before us.
Mr. Holden.
President, members, this motion is to indemnify the neighborhood councils against lawsuits? Looking at it. All right. Well, it's really not going to be necessary because they have those anti-punitive lawsuits. It's already been legislated. I think Lockyer was the author, I'm not sure. It says that-- A big developer-- You familiar with that? Then how's this different? Yeah.
For the average citizen--
What does the legislation say? State that first.
Well, no. For the average citizen to go through the process--
Sir, please do me a favor.
Calling something that's punitive.
Pardon?
I don't think the average citizen can afford the cost--
Oh, no, no. Well--
Even going forward and saying this is punitive. Already bankrupted. That's my experience.
What you do then is a frivolous lawsuit. And knowing that the law prohibits developers from suing neighborhood councils, and they file a lawsuit in any case, then it becomes a frivolous lawsuit. Therefore, it means that the neighborhood council can sue the developer and win because they knew in advance it was a frivolous lawsuit, and they demur, and it'll be dismissed at the first hearing. That's number one. If it's dismissed at the first hearing, you should know that. You're the general manager's department. You do know that, don't you?
I'm not an attorney.
All right. It'll be dismissed at the first hearing because the state law prohibits developers from suing neighborhood organizations for initiating a complaint against their projects. And that's what the neighborhood councils do, saying, I'm against this, I'm against that. So the fact of the matter is that they're already protected. And we don't have to spend any money. Now, if you will say, all right, if they're sued, we can give a legal counsel to go over and just do the simple paperwork, I have no problem with that because you're going to win at the first hearing level. And then, of course, that neighborhood council on their own then can bring a lawsuit against the developer, whoever sued them, and naming them for having filed a frivolous lawsuit, which they would win, and they could recover all their costs. If they recover the cost, whatever we expend in terms of the first hearing, they should reimburse the city. But that's what you'll be studying. You want to say something, Mr. Fuchia? I don't care about that.
I was going to suggest that we have a risk management group in the Office of Finance who has obtained policies of this type for other similar type of groups or programs in the city. And I would suggest that as part of this recommendation, that we instruct the risk manager for the city to come back with a specific plan and with that a policy.
All right, on my time. Before you develop a plan, why don't you just ask the city attorney to give you all the legislation which protects the neighborhood councils? Just do that.
Yeah. That's what we'll be doing on the meeting--
And that legislation is available, and they are protected. And in fact, they are indemnified.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Hey, Mr. President, colleagues. Last night, Councilmember Mr. Kowski and I attended a neighborhood council meeting formation in Tarzana. And one of the questions posed was litigation. If one member wants to file a lawsuit, one member of the neighborhood council wants to sue the city, and this whole issue of litigation came up. And there was an attorney who brought the group together. It was about forty people there. This was brought up by the people within the community. So I think it's important, and I strongly support this, that there's got to be a close relationship with your office and the city attorney's office to establish-- because they were posing questions in this legal arena with our litigious society that I really wasn't prepared to even think that they would go into that extreme. But they were. And they were very serious about litigation and their liabilities and what obligations they had, what protections they had. And then it went into if you're working within the boundaries or extending the boundaries. So when we asked these people to participate, and there's also conflict of interest that they asked about, if they're a member of the neighborhood council and they're voting on an issue that could have a development to financial gain to them, the conflicts there. So I don't know if there's been a relationship between you and the city attorney's office in establishing these councils. But some guidelines have to be established as we move deeper into this to clarify because there's a lot of unanswered questions. And I'm glad that Councilmember Garcetti brought this forward. But I don't know if you've touched on that at all, and if you could respond, if you have, and what direction you're taking with it.
Yes, Councilman. We have, in fact, that question comes up at just about every community meeting that we have. Because we keep hearing a lot of the same questions over and over again, the city attorney and other people have been working on putting together one very complete list of frequently asked questions so that we can post that on the internet, send it by email to groups, hand it out to people. And they can have a really comprehensive set of answers because we keep hearing a lot of these same questions over and over again. The simplest question-- and I'm being-- not being an attorney, I always hesitate to answer the legal questions. But there is a very high level of protection that the neighborhood councils as a creation of the city have when it comes to liability.
I might add, Mr. Zine, that-- Gail Weingard, Assistant City Attorney, that as part of the reorganization in our office, that there has been a Department of Neighborhoods that's made up of attorneys that is working, dedicated just to work with the neighborhood councils. And it is staffed by attorneys. Gwen Pointexter is heading that up, and she is a very experienced litigation attorney. So we'll be working very closely with that department.
I would just add, as they're putting these together in the formation stage, they include some materials to show that they will have the protection. Because when they pose the questions and the staff member, and you had a representative there, no one really knew. And I think that for reaching out and asking them to participate, we don't want to have them exposed to any liability or any risk. So if that could be included in the programs where these people come together-- because once we turn them off, they're not going to come back. We want to keep them involved.
It will be done.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Just in terms of understanding the city attorney's capacity to deal with this field of new litigation, I understand there's a restructuring going on. So are we going to be folding in these kinds of issues to that thinking process? I know you're not the city attorney's office, but are we looking at that direction? Because I'm assuming that with the volume of work that's going to come up, the numbers of neighborhood councils, that we have to be ready for this. And I think that's part of analysis you have to go through in terms of what the city attorney is contemplating as far as their restructuring.
Yes, Councilman. It didn't take too many meetings at which the city attorney attended to-- to realize they were hearing a lot of the same questions. So that's why we, in concert with the City Attorney and other departments, have set out to now make the comprehensive list of, here's all the questions we keep hearing, let's give very definite answers right now so that you know the answers, my staff knows the answers, the community knows the answers.
And you're factoring the volume, the volume of work that we anticipate given all the various issues that could arise, given the number of neighborhood councils going to be there.
Yeah, we're trying to look, we're trying to conceive of every possible situation and question and almost every day now we're hearing a new question from someone in the community, really good legitimate questions. And each one, especially if it's a legal one, I can't make up the answer, I have to go to the City Attorney and make sure we get the very definite clear answer because part of the problem in the past, very honestly, had been a lot of different answers being given to the same questions and a lot of confusion in the public resulting.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'll try to be quick. To address a couple of things that you brought up, Councilmember Holden, that state law in practice doesn't work to actually do, I think, what it was originally intended to. And for a lot of community groups who have to bring the court actions to even realize that law, sometimes it's too much money to the point where they are bankrupted. And it's not just about developments and developers and complaining against developers, nor is it just about neighborhood councils. It's about community groups broadly and it's often about the civic projects that they're engaged upon, which are just done broadly within the city. I think that Rocky Delgadoio, in looking at Neighborhood Prosecutors, the political question, and I would support the CEO's recommendation to include the risk manager as part of the working group, and if we can amend it to reflect that. But I wouldn't want this to be just a question of risk management for the city, too. It's a political question for the mayor, for the City Attorney, for this body to decide what sort of resources we are going to give to the neighborhood councils. Are we, in fact, even if the cost is perhaps greater, going to give them the sort of legal support that they need to be the sort of civic activists and part of this government that we need? It's a fundamental question that we also have to begin to weigh. And this is the beginning of looking at that process, but not just for neighborhood councils. This is for all community groups that are engaged in that civic exercise.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, you are obligated to defend the extra layer of government and that's neighborhood council. That's all it is. The public voted for it, became part of the charter, it's part of, it's one of the organizational layers of government, mayor, city council, and neighborhood councils. And we, if they cross the line, we're required by law to provide them counsel, period. All right? So that's no problem. Other organizations that was not created by charter, you can reserve the option to do that, but to extend yourself at this point in time, without being specific about other organizations, there's thousands of them out here that we say we're going to provide a defense for, that should be out of the question. No, sir. I mean, you can't afford it at all and it's far-reaching. At best, you get to think about it first. I could not at this time or not even in the near future vote for something so global scope. Well, I vote for, you know, he when it's going to come back, but for the other layer of government, as it relates to a defense for neighborhood councils for the action that they take, according to the charter, we are obligated. Even on the board of reservation of rights, they will sue us if we do not defend them. And they have a right to do that. Ask the City Attorney and they will tell you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on the agenda under council jurisdiction.
Thank you. The council calls forward Mort Allen.
I kind of don't know where to start. I just want to say, I know it's been 100 days, a little over that, and we have something very unique in Studio City. We have probably the hottest political campaign in the history of this city. We have two candidates, Tony Cardenas and Wendy Grau, that are going to every business, every restaurant, every night. Our community is so involved right now, everybody's watching Channel 35. And I want to make a comment that last week, something happened here on the council floor that showed more compassion than I think has ever come out of this city. It was an issue that we had with Carpenter Avenue School and a cell site next door to the school. And another councilman from another district, Jack Weiss, got up and said that it was unfair that we weren't represented. And we know that the limits that Arlene DeSantis has, they can hardly write a letter out of that office where there's no councilman. And then Janice seconded, I guess, and they were just celebrating in the street that somebody cared about Studio City. And I think that it shows this new council, and it starts with you, Alex, cares about the people. And the new people that came in have kind of even mellowed out Nate and some of the others. And it's like, this is a caring body. And it's only a shame that, I'm very much against the secession thing, and I was at the last hearing and I said, "It's like we're going against the president by trying to split the city when everybody's trying to go together." And I think that we need to, it's so good, it's like it's on a roll right now. And I think that we really have to appreciate it. I want to just make a couple of comments that I hope I can get through, I've worked on this for two years. But if anybody goes to a motel, you pay a 14% tax, yet you drive down the streets and you see bus shelters and billboards that don't pay a penny in tax. And there's no reason that you guys aren't picking up $10 to $15 million a year taxing the advertisers. Because right now what's happening is nobody wants junk mail, nobody's watching television, and they're paying $50,000 a month for a billboard. And instead of people, in one hand, you have the council saying, "We don't want billboards, the next one we want pole signs and more bus shelters and things like that." If we got it together and started looking at these issues, there's so much tax money laying, just sitting on the table, that people don't care about. Doesn't matter with Ford pays $50,000 for a billboard and they pay another tax, 10% tax on it, it doesn't matter. And I think, another thing I just want to tell you real quickly is, I want you all to understand that we have the biggest boom in the movie industry in history. There's not, I gave Janice a thing yesterday that the TV show Providence on Friday night, films in Providence, Rhode Island, they've now decided to film in LA and they're looking for a waterfront site, and there's nothing better than Porzingis Village that's New England style. Now, no actor will fly in. They all want, every soundstage in the city is jammed now. We have an industry that is just really rebounding and we're going to probably have the aerospace coming back. And the last thing I want to say, and I'm on my way up to bring this to Rocky, we had a convention two weeks ago, the International Council of Shopping Centers in Palm Springs. Every city in Southern California had a booth there except Los Angeles.
Thank you very much.
I have a thing here, just a second, just a second. Every city is offering free taxes, everybody gave packages of incentives that they're offering. And so we got a lot of competition with businesses now, but we're still the greatest city and hopefully Rocky's going to send this out to everybody, all this stuff here. But we're really on a roll and I want to see that it just keeps up and I want to just congratulate all the new people because it is true, you know, I mean, we had council people here for 35 years and now all of a sudden the new people. And it's just, people are watching Channel 35. I don't, I mean, it's almost like everybody talks about watching it. So just want to let you all know that.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public comment period for today's meeting. Next item, please.
Mr. President, there's a request to continue one of the closed session items, item 41A, request to continue that to tomorrow, that would be October 24th.
Request to continue item 41A, members, without objection.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's clear the desk.
There's motions for posting and referral.
Those motions are posted and referred.
You have excuses on the desk. Councilmember Ridley Thomas requested to be excused from today's meeting, city business to leave at 11:00 AM, that meets council policy.
Hold on a second. Before we do that, Ms. Galanter? Ms. Galanter? I don't want to lose the quorum here and I don't know, I don't see Mr. Pacheco here. I'm looking for Mr. Pacheco and I don't see him. He's in the hallway? Okay. Just want to make sure we don't lose the quorum here. We had an absence request?
Yes, Mr. President. Councilmember Burnson requests to be excused, city business, Tuesday, November 6th, city business meets council policy.
Mr. Burnson is excused.
Councilmember Ridley Thomas requests to be excused, November 2nd, city business, that also meets council policy.
Mr. Ridley Thomas is excused.
Council President Padilla requests to be excused, city business, November 6th, a motion is required.
Mr. Reyes? Mr. Padilla is excused.
That clears the desk for closed session.
In conformance with California code, the council will now adjourn into closed session. I ask the guards to please clear the chambers. Welcome back into open session. Madam Clerk, next item before us, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 38A. It's relative to funding outside council in the case of City of LA versus State Water Resources Control Board et al.
Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item 38B is also an outside council in the amount of $300,000 and that's in the case of Santa Monica Bay Keeper et al. versus City of LA.
Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved as well. Next item.
Item 41D is relative to funding for outside council in the case of Groberson versus City of LA and that's in the amount of $370,000.
Please, Ms. Kowski, did you wish to speak? Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
That also is approved.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Adjourning motions? Adjourning motions? Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd ask that you join me in adjourning today in the memory of a gentleman named Thomas Wales, who didn't live in Los Angeles, lived in Seattle, Washington. He was an Assistant United States Attorney, a federal prosecutor, and he was also a very prominent gun control advocate in the state of Washington. And several weeks ago, he was murdered in his home, in his basement, while he was working one night. No one knows who murdered him or why. There's an investigation that's ongoing. There's certainly a strong suspicion amongst law enforcement authorities that the killing was in some way related to his strong advocacy work on behalf of gun control in the state of Washington. He founded a group named Washington Ceasefire, which had done a lot of good work in that area in that state, and I ask that we adjourn in his memory today.
Any others? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.